We're all going to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is on the wall over there. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. The Verona Board of Education passed the resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 9, 2018. The meeting set forth a schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona City of Times, the Star Ledger, the Herald News, the Township of Verona, and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted in each of Verona's six schools, the board office, and town hall. This posting was also sensitive by newspapers, all SCA presidents, and SCA liaisons. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent and agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled or to be voted upon separately. Copies of tonight's agenda resolutions have been made available to the public present. Mr. Day?
I am here.
Mrs. Bernardino?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mrs. Rusty?
Here.
Okay, thank you for attending tonight. We have a couple of presentations, and right before we get into the first one, do we have any public question or comment on any agenda items? Okay, we'll turn it over to Mr. Studo, our principal from Brookdale Elementary School, and the student presentation on Flipgrid.
Thank you, Dr. Dinesio, and members of the Board of Education, for allowing us the opportunity to come here tonight. Our students and teachers are really excited to share with you the use of Flipgrid. You're going to get a little background as to what Flipgrid is, how we use it in the classroom, and you'll see some examples of our student videos. So, thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Duffy, and then just to show you. We have here with us Mrs. Duffy, who's our academic coach at both Brookdale and Lanning. She's going to give you a little overview of Flipgrid and how it's used in her classroom. I also have with me Mrs. Till, who's our third grade teacher; Mrs. Walker, who is the librarian at Brookdale and F.M. Brown; and then we have some students, boys and girls, if I call your name, can you just wait? We have Josephine, who's a first grader; Riley, who is a second grader; we have third graders Lori, Karen, and Logan; and then we have a fourth grader Samantha. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Duffy. Thank you.
So, a reading practice is crucial to a developing reader's success. Practice needs to be engaged reading time, and not just time spent looking on paper. As a reading intervention teacher at Lanning and Brookdale, I need to find ways to encourage and motivate striving readers to independently practice their targeted skills on a daily basis. I came across Flipgrid and knew it was a platform that the students and classroom teachers would embrace. This school year, the Reading Intervention Program was able to provide a license to third grade classrooms in each elementary building. Flipgrid is a user-friendly video interface that students and staff are loving, and more importantly, it is providing the additional practice that many students need. Currently, classroom teachers in all grades are differentiating instruction and allowing their striving students access to Flipgrid for the daily practice that they need to develop their reading skills. In order to become better at anything, you need to practice. This is especially true with the meeting. Not only does Flipgrid provide students with a unique way to hone their reading skills, it enables me to be available to them even when I'm in another building. I can provide students with a check-in and additional support and resources as needed. After introducing Flipgrid to the third grade staff, the use of sharing of ideas spread quickly throughout our building and district. Many teachers and parents have shared that even their most reluctant readers have the gear to practice using this technology. Mrs. Till is going to speak about ways in which she is incorporating this platform into not only her reading instruction, but across the curriculum.
Thanks, Mrs. Duffy. When Mrs. Duffy introduced me to Flipgrid last year, I was instantly hooked. I was eager to get my students on and realize how it could be utilized in so many ways. I immediately registered and got the class recording. For reading responses to science and social studies demonstrations, Flipgrid has given my students a new platform for reflecting on their learning, and me the opportunity to better assess and provide individualized feedback. Since we received funding for our Flipgrid accounts, I, along with the other third grade teachers in district, have been actively incorporating it into all academic areas. My classes have used it to reflect on their reading, to celebrate their writing, and to even advise, I'm sorry, to give advice to incoming third graders at the end of the school year last June. Watching my students' enthusiasm for it says so much about how effective this platform is. Students are quiet, and usually much more shy in class amaze me at how outgoing they become once they start recording. One of my favorite features of Flipgrid is that students can provide feedback to one another. This allows them to peer edit and observe the work of their classmates. I also use it to spotlight students' work by showing some of their recordings on the smartboard for the whole class to see. I'm so grateful to Mrs. Duffy for introducing Flipgrid to me last year. It's opened up so many new opportunities for my teaching and for my students' learning. Now, I would like to introduce Karen Quinn, one of my third grade students, who will now show you just one of the many ways that Flipgrid can be implemented.
My name is Karen Quinn, and I'm in third grade. I think Flipgrid is great because you make a video about your thoughts, and kids just see your video and reflect on it to make your thinking better. In this video, you will see me reflect on a fiction book I was reading. I listed some character traits and explained why I thought these words described the character.
My character is Daniel from Iggy and Lumis, and I honestly think he's a little spoiled because he always says he needs something. When you need something, you need, like, water, but he needs his, like, speech glasses and toys or something. He says that all the time. Also, he's kind of demanding because he's always yelling, "I need this, I need that", and I don't want to be mean, but he's also bossy because he's always telling Iggy what to do, and he never lets him play if he was on his game because he thinks it'd be annoying. He might be a little imaginative because he's sharing all of this, he's having all of these, oh, these crazy dreams, and he's, like, having more Iggy things, super big as a giant, and Iggy eats him, stuff like that.
So, when students post these videos on the Flipgrid platform, they are able to, as you saw Karen do, record a video on this book topic, and then the students are able to watch each other's videos, and they respond to them. So, it's a really nice, interactive platform for the students.
Hi, my name is Josephine Mongeau. I'm in first grade at Brookdale. I like Flipgrid because it's good to share thoughts with others. In the video you are going to watch, I responded a video that Mrs., I responded to a video that Ms. Walker made. I filmed this video on a snow day, which was fun, though I still have to see my teacher on the day off.
Hello, Ms. Walker. I've been in chapters really long because all the people have been very sweet to Samar and her family, even though they moved there. They just moved in, and they needed a little of that different tradition, a different thing. My mom was crying because she was so sweet, and I said, "All right, bye."
Okay, up next, we're going to hear from Lori. So, I heard Josephine say even on the day off for students for EPH, talking about reading on Flipgrid.
Hi, my name is Lori Hempel, and I'm in third grade. What I like about Flipgrid is that you can share things with your teacher in class. You also have assignments that'll tell you what to share. If you're at home, you have to put in a code for a certain assignment, and if you're at school, it'll most likely be on classroom. In my Flipgrid video that you are about to watch, I discuss my thoughts about the social studies topic, Ellis Island Democracy.
Hi, I'm doing network for my immigrant kids' presentation, and I think that the immigrants had to work really hard, and they, some immigrants had to lie that they were 14 so they could work because their parents did not, because their family did not have enough of money. And they had a lot of different jobs, like rolling cigars, eating artificial flowers, working at, and working at factories, clothing factories, and shelling nuts for restaurants. So, I'm really, I really think that it's cool that the immigrants had to work at a very young age, and they just had the money for their family, and I really like that they supported their family and helped make a money.
Hi, my name is Samantha Heimler. I'm in fourth grade. Flipgrid helped me share my thoughts about chapters I've been reading in Book History for One District One Book. I could also see other people on Flipgrid and respond to them and give them feedback on what they talked about. The Flipgrid video I'm going to share is the one where you receive and respond to the new characters as they were introduced in Book History, and it made some connection with the story.
Hey, guys, I'm Samantha from Brookdale, and tonight we mentioned it's eight, nine, ten, and I really liked those chapters because we got introduced to Samar. And I felt bad for her because when she wished for a friend, I felt really sad because she just moved there, and she doesn't have any friends.
Hi, my name is Riley Kenny. I'm in second grade. Flipgrid helps students learn more about the book they were reading. It is also fun. In my Flipgrid video you are going to watch, I talk about friendship and make text connections with Book History.
Hello, I'm Riley from Brookdale. And I think that Red feels like his real life has greater purpose now because Red's developed having Stephen and Samar to become friends, and I think it's important to have friendship because all the people that I know and me have friends, and, and all the people that I know I'm friends with, and that's how I know. And it kind of reminds me of one year where I was different from each other, from everyone else. He was born different, and he didn't, he was kind of upset, but then later in the movie, he didn't care about what other people said, and then this boy, Jack, tried to include him and be friends with him. Bye.
Hello, my name is Logan Rae, and I'm in third grade. I find that Flipgrid helps me to communicate because I'm not so good at typing or writing. In the video you are about to see, my stepmom will be sharing the answer posed, and I will say my answer.
Hello, my name is Logan from Brookdale Elementary School. Ms. Till's in class third grade.
Stay. Why do you think the kids and teachers and principals and parents of Samar's school made the plan to each tie the word "stay" on Red?
Because the tree said "leave," but they said "stay." They wanted someone to feel wanted. They wanted to prove she belonged there and was wanted. Have a nice day. Bye.
So, we only got an audience members of Board of Education, so a little glimpse as to how Flipgrid has helped out our students, helped them communicate, helped them express their thoughts about reading, about social studies, and really not only taken learning happening in the classroom, but also extending that learning at home as well. Our students thought it would be exciting if we had the opportunity to share with the board how easy Flipgrid is to use, so our students are just going to grab a Chromebook, bring it up to our members of the Board of Education, and let you respond to our Flipgrid question of the evening. from our presentation, how they think that Flipgrid is useful in the classroom. So, all they have to do is click a plus sign, and students are showing them how easy it is, and they can record their videos. So, as the videos are beginning to pop up on the screen, so if this were the classroom setting, that's where students would be able to watch each other's videos, respond to each other. Well, they're finishing up. I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Walker, Owen Waits, the board members who had a copy of the book, so I was able to read the book along with the school, so I was familiar. I was watching a lot of the students' Flipgrid, you know, throughout their reading of the book, and it's fantastic. So, thank you. So, thank you again. We hope you enjoyed learning how Flipgrid, see how easy it is, and how much the students are enjoying and learning from it. Thank you again.
So, just on behalf of the board, thank you to Mr. Studo, Ms. Till, Ms. Walker, and nothing but, look, folks in New York, this is proof positive that we don't know what the presentations are going to be that students do before we walk in here. We just get a title, and we're building, they're coming. So, this was a great demonstration by the students. I'd like to just ask, if you come back to my conference, what's the plan for this September?
Well, we, it's, currently, we have a full membership in the third grade. All of the teachers at Brookdale have free membership opportunities. They use it in their classrooms, use it for reading. At the reading intervention level, Mrs. Duffy is able to push in and utilize it with her students, so all of the teachers have exposure. We hope to continue it. You know, the free limitations certainly are limits, but, you know, as you can see, it's a free membership, so it has, it does have a lot of opportunities just on the free platforms.
And can you extend it to the other elementary?
Actually, all of the elementary schools have been exposed to it through the Reading Intervention Program. All the third grade teachers across the district are currently using it to its fullest extent. It was utilized throughout the One District One Book experience as well, so.
Well, you've certainly worked on increasing participation as you love. I hear what you're saying. Thank you. Our next presentation will be, you know, from Mr. Miller, and our fellow members will be, Patrick Gens, to our full-day kindergarten presentation, who's going to make a proposal for a second question on our front, on this type of, for the, we'll have a, we'll have a question.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Land, one of the elementary principals, principal of F.M. Brown. Tonight, the elementary principals will be presenting the benefits of all-day K. So, we're here for the purpose of informing the public and sharing our research that we've been doing. So, an overall snapshot of what you're going to see over the next 10, 12 slides. We're going to talk about the process that we've been involved in this past school year, the research that we've done. We're going to talk about the New Jersey Department of Ed Implementation Guidelines, the benefits of all-day K, comparing our current extended day to a full day, and also we're going to share with you a sample schedule, and there's a slide on the cost-benefit analysis. So, I'm joined by Mr. Monticelli, Principal of Forest, Mr. Floyd, Principal of Lanning, and Mrs. Studo, Principal of Brookdale. So, what steps have we taken in this process? Monthly, each grade level participates in grade level meetings. The kindergarten teachers, for example, meet with one another and an assigned principal once a month for about an hour. So, we've spent most of our grade level meetings this year, probably about 80%, discussing, comparing, researching our current program, which is called an extended day, 8:30 to 12:30, to a full day. So, that's the first step that we took. Our kindergarten teachers, and they have been a huge help, along with the elementary principals, we've been researching the benefits of an all-day program. And there's a lot of research out there showing the benefits and the positive impact it has on students' social, emotional, and intellectual, you know, status by third grade, so to speak. We also met with a parent advocacy group that supports all-day kindergarten, and the parents met with Mr. Miller, Director of Curriculum, the superintendent, and myself. We're informing the public that's tonight, welcome, you're being informed, as you see. Also, we're conducting site visits in the fall, but what's interesting about the site visits is that we're going to visit districts that have recently moved from half-day or extended day to all-day, rather than visit districts that have all-day and they've had it for five, 10, 15 years, because that transition piece, you know, learning from other districts and how they implemented the program, and lessons learned from, you know, from the transition is very helpful. So, what does the research say? So, it's showing that we're seeing gains in reading and math achievement for students due to an all-day program. It's not as hurry, there's more time to delve in deeper, particularly with reading and writing and math. We're also seeing, and this is what I alluded to before, is the social, emotional, and intellectual benefits for students. And Mr. Monticelli has a slide that's coming up next, where he's going to give the specific benefits linked to the socialization, the emotional piece, and of course, the academic piece, or so to speak, the intellectual piece. And let's face it, all-day and more time, so that time will allow our teachers and our students to have more time for transitions, for reflection, overall learning, and it's also showing that our students that attend a full-day kindergarten program, the research is showing that they're most likely to be on grade level in third grade due to the all-day kindergarten program. And then the last one about the transition to first grade. So, right now, we find a lot of our first graders, they're exhausted by 12:30, at least the first half of the year, because they're used to 12:30, you know, we go home. So, now, with being an all-day program and kindergarten, moving on to first grade, they're used to the rigor of a six-plus-hour day. So, at this time, I'm going to call over, Mr. Monticelli's going to talk about the implementation guidelines. Good evening. So, I'm looking at, talking about the NJDOE Kindergarten Implementation Guidelines. This is a very large document that we went through, we looked at, and we took some important quotes out of there, and one of them is, "A high-quality kindergarten curriculum is anchored in state content standards, principles of child development, and age-appropriate teaching strategies." Positive thing about full-day kindergarten, when you look at this, is there's the New Jersey learning standards that we have to accomplish. There's benchmarks for when they have to be accomplished. So, if something has to be accomplished by fourth grade or second grade, and we have full-day kindergarten, we're going to be able to move to those sooner. So, there'll be less to do in first grade, or you can pull down some things, you can reinforce some things. So, right there, we're hitting those content standards in a better way. Another quote we pulled from there was, "Learning centers should be available every day for open exploration and for activities with specific content focus, such as mathematics and language arts literacy." Well, we teach language arts literacy and math in kindergarten now. That's the main focus of kindergarten. Learning centers, or what we call center time, we don't always have time every day. Having time built into the schedule, that extra time in the day, the extra hour and a half of instructional time, could give us more time to do this on a daily basis rather than two or three times a week, because there will be a separate time for recess and lunch, where now, you have to cram everything in that four hours. And the last quote is- And the last quote is, "A full-day schedule allows more time for formal and informal learning activities across the content areas. It provides ample time for projects, engagement in the arts, individualization, and social interaction with adults and other children. Children have more time to ask questions and explore topics." In kindergarten, there's both formal and informal learning. The formal, obviously, is the content standards and what we're covering. But there's all that informal, the social piece, the working with other kids, the doing things with the teacher, creative projects. So all of that, that extra hour and a half a day will give more time for those things. The next thing I'm going to talk about is what we looked at in this time. Dr. Lando said, "We spend a lot of time with our current kindergarten teachers at our grade level meetings." And all four principals attended these meetings with them, going over, what are we doing now, and what will it look like if this passes, the residents and the voters of Verona decide to do this. And we said, "I think these are the key benefits based on the research and what we discussed with the Verona teachers." One thing would be additional reinforcement of positive social behaviors. Kindergarten, very important part, as I just said, is social behavior. It's learning how to interact with others. A lot of children come from preschool, and there are some, a few that don't, or some that come from a few days in preschool, some that come from full days. So there's a learning curve for kids when they come, and they have to learn how to interact with other children. So this is a positive. Another one is increased time spent in individualized instruction. We use the reading and writing workshop model in kindergarten. Right now, the teacher, part of that should be guided reading and writing, and it should also be individualized. Having an extra time built in the day, this extra hour and a half of instructional time, could give the teacher more time to do that individual piece, working with each child. And that's a big part of reading and writing workshop. Another one is greater creativity, more time, more time to be creative, to do more creative projects. Right now, you can say, "This is the project we're doing," but if we have the extra time, we can do more with that project, and we can be more creative. This is a big one for kids, the next one, structured recess and lunch. And I think a lot of parents have come to me in the years and talked to me about, you know, do the kindergartners have recess? Well, they usually either have recess or center time. You don't have time for both. So now, center time, we would hope to have built into the schedule each day, and you'll see that on one of the slides that Mrs. Studo is going to talk about. But they're going to have a structured recess and lunch, like everyone else in the school, most likely at a different time. So we will keep, and part of the cost is having two of our lunch eights stay or come earlier and work with those kindergarten children. And they'll have time to eat, and they'll have time to have playtime with their friends. Added time for curricular implementation across all content areas. This one is important because now, having the extra time, reading, writing, math, that's a big part of the day. Now we'll see a little bit more social studies and science. Now we can cross those curricular areas. All those things can be hit within the day, and you have a better cross-curricular content. And you can, by teaching cross-curricular, you can cover multiple standards kind of in the same time. So you can do a reading lesson that incorporates social studies. You can do a reading lesson that incorporate, or a writing lesson that incorporates science. You can kind of cross them over much easier than when you don't, when you have the limited time. Additional time for collaboration among classroom teachers, specialists, related services, and special education. Right now, the kindergarten teacher day, they're paid 77% of a teacher's salary. So whatever they are on the guide, they get 77%. But their day is 77%. So they have a day, they work until about 1:50. So the children get out at 12:30, then they have their lunch, and they have their plan period, and 1:50, they're finished. Now, they will have, like every other teacher works until 3:30, they'll have time to collaborate with other teachers, attend more meetings, talk to related services staff, child study team members, things that they didn't always have the availability. They do do that now, but it's kind of rushed in there and you have to make sure that those specialists are in the building and not at one of the other schools. And lastly, we feel that they would be more prepared for the first-grade curriculum in a full day. I mentioned before, with that research, we're recovering more of the standards earlier. They're going to be better prepared for first grade, and they're also going to be better prepared because now, they've had the first day, the full day in kindergarten. And most children are already coming from a full-day pre-K scenario. Mrs. Studo.
So in collaboration with the kindergarten teachers, what we did is we looked at, currently in an extended-day program, on average, how many hours per week were we spending on certain subject areas? And then in the proposed full-day schedule, how many hours of instruction would we be able to provide for these subject areas? So in the area of math, currently, on average, we have approximately 150 minutes weekly spent on mathematics instruction. In a proposed full day, we'd be able to provide 225 weekly minutes on mathematics. Reading workshop, currently at 90 minutes on average per week, could be bumped up to 150 minutes. So that's huge, as Mr. Monticelli shared, that individual instruction, that time for guided reading, small groups would really be critical in helping prepare our kindergartners to become readers. Writing workshop as well, currently 90 minutes per week on average. Again, that could be bumped up to 150 minutes per week. And I'll show you what the weekly schedule could look like, so you can see what 150 looks like over a week time span. And lastly, social studies and science, collectively together, is currently about 60 minutes per week. We could really dedicate some more time to that content and bump it up to 90 minutes per week. And when we look at this on a whole, and I think this number is really critical, as Mr. Monticelli shared, it's on average about an hour and a half extra per day of additional instruction time. When you factor in, that's 270 hours per year. That number translates to 45 additional instructional days per year, going from an extended day to a full-day program. So it really is a lot of added instruction for our kindergartners. And again, in collaboration with our kindergarten teachers, we just took a look at what a full-day kindergarten schedule could look like. So this is just a sample schedule, so you can see the time dedicated, 30 minutes to reading workshop every day, 30 minutes to writing workshop. You can see that consistent 45 minutes of lunch and recess that would be dedicated, possibly either before or after our current first through fourth grade lunch and recess period, dedicated 45 minutes for math. We have that center time that, as Mr. Monticelli shared, is also crucial, all incorporated throughout the week. Once this is added onto our website, you'll be able to take a closer look. But again, just to keep in mind, this is a sample schedule of what a week could look like, but provides our students with more time for those curricular content areas, more time to really delve into topics on a deeper basis.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. It's great to have the opportunity to talk about this, to make sure that everybody has a complete picture. Throughout the year, as you heard, we met, spent a lot of time with our kindergarten staff, did a lot of research. One of the things that we researched, we wanted to see what the neighbors were doing, who the districts that are close to us, and some of the districts that we also looked to, just to see what they're doing programming-wise. So these are the districts that we often look to, that do have full-day K. And you can see, it's in good company, or they would be in good company with us. One of the things that's interesting about this is that, while we were doing all this research, we found that there's currently a bill, kind of cycling its way through the New Jersey Legislature, that mandates New Jersey having a full-day K. Yeah, it was introduced in January. It's at some point in the process. And eight out of 10 districts in New Jersey currently have a full-day program, and the other two have some sort of half-day. New Jersey is one of, I think, two or three states that does not have a dictated amount of time for kindergarten. It's up to the local board and the local community to decide exactly what kindergarten day looks like. 13 states have mandated full day. So there's a big push. It's, there's a push for pre-K, and there's a push for kindergarten, getting there early, work with kids as much as possible. Again, and it's not just curricular, it's play, structured play, center time, recess, teach them how to do school. So this was pretty interesting for us. Getting back to that bill before I go to the next slide, which is the cost. If the bill does go through, it would mandate that districts that have a high proportion of students that have high needs or at risk, they would have to start the program next year in September. All other districts would be mandated to start it following year. So it's pretty timely. So here are the 7%. They teach until 12:30, and then they have various duties, lunch, meeting time, that happens up until about 1:50. So part of the cost would be filling in that day from 77% to 100%, and that's salaries. And that, again, everybody would be on a, you know, that 23% isn't just one number that everybody would get, it'd depend on where they are on their budget. So the number that we came up with, and again, this was, this was, this was really, it was an enlightening process, because we really got to work together. We asked the teachers to do the research. On one of the meetings, they all had Chromebooks and said, "Find research, find pro research, find con research. Let's learn as much as we possibly can." But we also really took a look at what we're using in terms of supplies, what we're using in terms of, you know, not just curricular supplies, but what you need for recreation, center time, all those different things. And the number that we came up with, that we would need to fund the program would be $215,000 per year. That is, that is the amount that the district would have to pay to fund the full-day program. The number that would be to the taxpayer for the average household in Verona would be $42 per year. And I've answered this question a few times to some of my parents, but that number, if the town does decide to vote for it, that gets voted for once, and that gets added onto our baseline, onto that budget number. It's not something that comes around every year or every couple of years. That's the new normal for the town. So that $215,000 funds the program. And again, I don't know what the average household is in Verona, but the number is $42 per year for that. So these are the areas where the funding would go. And again, a lot of it would be the salary cost to increase the teacher from 77% to 100%. The teachers already are receiving benefits, so it's not a benefit cost. Again, it's a salary cost. We would have to rework some of our lunch periods. Right now, all the schools do something fairly similar, where we have two grades eating at a time. We would, we decided that it's best to, because not just in terms of age and appropriateness, but in terms of space, to pull the kindergarten out and have them eat alone and have recess alone. So we would have to bring upon a few of our lunch eights either earlier, or late, or stagger them, to make sure that the kids were properly supervised. There's supplies and materials, curricular and also recreational. And also, we would have to do a little work to our special schedule, because we'd be heading out to the day, we'd increase their gym, and we would have to, our specialist teachers are pretty packed as it is. So through all that, the number that we came up with was $215,000. And again, the big number, $42 per year. Thank you. All this will be on the website, along with the FAQ sheet that we have. It answers a lot of the questions that we came up with. If you have questions, please reach out to any of us. We did a lot of reading on it. That document that I think Mr. Monticelli was talking about is huge, but it's informative. If anybody wants any of these documents we use, we'll be glad to share them with you. It was a great process. That will all be on our websites, and you can reach out to us at our schools through email, through the phone. Thanks so much.
So thank you for the, thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of different columns I'll add to that. For the public, the way these sorts of second questions are about work is, is if you vote yes for it, it will get added to the baseline budget go forward, the $215,000. But more importantly, it is protected money. Unlike most of the budget, it becomes ring-fenced. So any future board cannot raid it and go use it for buying a Maserati. It's got to be used to support the program. So money cannot be deflected from the purpose if it gets added to the budgets for this mechanism. The trade, however, is if it gets voted down, which is what happened the last time we put it up, then the board, even if we found it, cannot implement it, because a no vote is interpreted, and must be interpreted as not just a no vote on the money, but on the concept. So it's important that everybody understands that. A no vote is not just on the money, it's on the concept. And for that entirety of that year, the board is not allowed to implement the program if they had the money. Simply, we don't have the money, but obviously we have the money. The 45 days is very, very material. I've been on the board a long time. I've negotiated, well, pardon, negotiating for every, just about every contract we've had, and changes to bell schedules and all of that over the years. And I can tell you how much work it is for Miss Thomas this year, where we added just 10 minutes to the schedule for certain days of the week at high school to accommodate certain lab courses. You know, when you do a lab for a particular class, if you have breakdown time, you have time. And it adds just 10 minutes, kind of how difficult that was. This is adding 90 minutes a week, I'm sorry, per day. And then it's 45 days of instructional time, over what the students are getting today, per year. So you add that up with all of the other benefits that they're talking about. And then, again, just because we have had various opinions about this in the past, and we just encourage our community to remember a couple of things. One, this is about improving the educational experience with all students, okay? It is not possible to implement something that will benefit all students from kindergarten through 12th grade, going to classes of different, subjects of different, students are different, et cetera, et cetera. So this would be in perpetuity. So it benefits everyone going forward. It also, so therefore, it's a community benefit, okay? We should not have a debate that there's a cadre of parents that feel this is important to them, and once their children enter the first grade, no one else cares. That is absolutely not true, okay? And we just had a live court, well, we call it live court, it sounds hyper technical, basically, it's the school's version of a professionally conducted census of population trends for students coming into the school district. And the reason why it's a live court is because if someone has a child that was just born, you know, just before, it's got to come, you know, one of them is right there, then, then we need to know today, then four years' time or five years' time, that's to be likely unless somebody moves or something changes, et cetera, et cetera. So we looked at that to manage how our forecast's going forward, all right? So this is in perpetuity, and it benefits the community and everyone. And then lastly, the last time, we got a little bit negative, too negative for most folks' taste, around, well, this is just a taxpayer-funded way to provide parents with free childcare, right? All right? Now, not only is that insulting to all the good work that everyone's done around preparing for this, but it's also, if you think about it, you know, the 90 minutes a day between 12:30 and 3 o'clock is sort of the window of time. And I don't think anybody is running to the bank, because you get not to have to worry about your child for 90 minutes a day. That's not what this is about, okay? So if we keep it to, the benefits are the benefits, look at it on its merits. The question is, do we, as a community, vote yes, go do it, or do we say, no, don't go do it? But let's not turn it into, well, you know, there's some Russian people that want it for their own selfish purposes, because I can tell you, that's not the case.
I have a quick question. So the extra 90 minutes, is that total 90 minutes, or it's 90 minutes instructional time?
90 minutes instructional time. So that's excluding lunch.
Okay. So how many, including lunch and everything, how many additional minutes?
90 is 45-minute recess lunch period, plus 90 minutes.
Could you go back to that?
Two hours and 50 minutes. 90 minutes of instructional time and 45 minutes of lunch.
The 45-minute lunch period, lunch and recess is each 20 minutes and five minutes in between, so. But that's also a piece. You know, we're talking about instructional time, but we did mention that kindergarten, the play and the emotional and social piece is part of it. So not only are we adding the 90 minutes of instructional, we're putting that 45, lunch, being able to communicate, talk with kids, and do things, and then the recess period.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question.
Something, I just, I'm sorry. The only because we're recorded and all, I need you to come to the microphone.
Oh, sure.
So you're recording? Well, we can give you one of the Chromebooks from earlier in the afternoon.
Sure. My name is Jill Donbrowski. I live at 24 Cliff Street. I'm in the Lanning School District. I have a child in first grade and a daughter who's entering kindergarten. I have a child in first grade and a daughter who's entering kindergarten. We've talked about the challenges of children coming from different backgrounds entering into kindergarten, and the individualized instruction that's really important for them. So I'm curious, what is the criteria for determining class size in arriving at this cost-benefit analysis?
So I want Dr. Dinesh to take the details on this, but our policies around class size, I believe, already cover kindergarten.
They do.
So we already have policies around kindergarten size, regardless of the number of hours in a day.
So generally speaking, we, obviously, we always want a smaller class size, as small as possible, within reason. Because of our close-knit community and our tight neighborhood schools, they are, in some years, more prone to fluctuations, depending on the number of students, children, that are in those specific grades. Typically, when we have a student body in a class that is approaching twenty-five and reaches twenty-five, that's when we have a discussion regarding, you know, what the situation and dynamics of that class are. All along, when we're in the twenties, and we hear from the principals, and we're talking to the elementary principals, with central office, myself, with Ms. Nardino, we have communication with the board based on if it's going to cause us to potentially have to split a class. But every situation is different, and it really hinges on the dynamics and the situation within that specific classroom. But typically, we usually have those conversations when we're approaching twenty-five.
Okay.
You're welcome.
One last thing I'd say about that, yeah, come on up. No, oh, sorry, those are, I should come up here. One thing that we also say about that is, when it comes to class size, especially in the younger grades, one of the things that's always available to parents is, if you have a class size that you're uncomfortable with at your particular school, we do allow you a petition to have your son or daughter move to another building that has a more appropriate class size, if you're concerned about that. The one thing about our neighborhood schools, before I mentioned, is there are great fluctuations. And for the board, you know, not to be victimized, for the board, it's very, very difficult, especially since we strike out budgets in April, and then people tend to move themselves out in the middle of the summer, and then show up in September, and suddenly, you know, you have plus or minus X number of students, and you have a rental problem, or you thought you had a problem, and you no longer have a problem. That kind of stuff happens just about every year, some grade or another, of course.
And whether we like it or not, the economics of it are, to Mr. Georgie's point, are difficult at times, because when we strike the budget in April, and we're going to potentially have to add an additional section, because we have to split a class, that's an additional, approximately seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars potentially, in an additional cost in the district. That's unbudgeted for, so it has to come out of some other account somewhere else. So those are the adjustments that have to be made.
Another quick question about timing.
That is interesting.
I'm sorry, just need to make. Jen, Chris Lee, for sale. I was interested in the bill that's pending under the legislature, and wondering how that might impact the timing, or whether or not it's likely. I guess my question is multi-level.
So my, so what, Mr. Foyng, come up and answer that more detail, but my understanding is the bill is not pending, the bill is being voted about.
Okay. Well, if by some, if by some stroke, by some miracle, it were to get accelerated through the legislature, would that impact, and we are one of the districts that had to start it in the fall, would that mean that we would have to vote on it sooner, or does it become something that's mandated by the state and the budget isn't then voted on?
So it would be the latter, but it would be, the latter would be that it would be mandated, and the vote is moved at that point. However, for Verona, we would not be in the list of districts that would be mandated for coming here. It would be the following.
Okay. So part two of the question, thank you, is if we were to lose when it's on, when this is on the ballot, and then the bill does get passed, would it then be mandated without needing to be voted on? I assume based on your previous experience.
Yes, yes. However, the big unknown, and the reason why, my understanding is, it's not finalized yet, is how would you pay for it?
Well, I guess, does anyone know what the bill number is, if you look and see if there's provisions for funding?
I can only, there's a frequently asked question that tends to...
I'll have to look it up.
Okay.
But we could, we could.
Great. Thank you.
You guys are so lovely, Hazy, it's great to have you.
Hi. My name is Kristy Givartolo, thirty-four Oakleys Road, Forest Avenue. So it seems like there's obviously a lot of pros that go along with this, and I'm wondering if in the studies, have there been any cons, and what are they? And certainly, you know, unstructured play, and how exactly is all this?
Yeah, that's a great question, and thanks for asking that. So the, there are two, there are two, I won't say, I won't use the word cons, but there are two challenges. One is the cost, you know, to find the money to do this for any one year, it's a near quarter of a million dollars, that's not easy, though. We just had much money that we cut, just to satisfy the confines of the budget that we have now. One thing I will mention about the budget, and there was some dad that was going through with Dr. Dinesh earlier today, for taxpayers in Verona, the Verona school budget, as public, the audited numbers that are published by the Department of Ed has us in seventy-one districts of the state that have kindergarten through twelfth grade with eighteen-hundred to three thousand students, that's how the Department of Ed categorizes these districts. We are the ninth lowest spending of seventy-one districts, today. Ninth lowest, so there's only eight places that spend less per student than we do. The challenge for us is that if we increase that spending, you're limited to a two percent increase to the tax of our revenue. And that two percent is not, cannot sustain in the early, this time, in practice, you have to cut a couple of them, reduce some positions, unfortunately. So that's one thing. So the first challenge is cost, which is why, if the bill becomes mandated, part of that fight is going, I would not expect it to get implemented the way they're saying, like if they said it's mandated for the year, that would not give districts enough time to react to that, and I can't imagine they'd enforce it unless the state came up with money, and they're like, hundred and nineteen billion dollars in the whole pensions already, and I'm not sure they have, you know, there's no pockets to catch. The second con is, not con, the challenge for us is that we have extended day, and it becomes a little tricky to compare extended day to full day, where most of the study is around not having it versus, not having kindergarten versus having it, because again, in New Jersey, it's not mandatory that you have kindergarten at all today, which is why the bill is running. And secondly, to say, well, if you had half-day, that ends at eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty, seven.
We have full-day, so we're already doing a little bit more. The problem for us is that that extra hour, it now mandates some break-down threat, right? Whereas if students went to eleven-thirty, you have one schedule of courses and sections of the day and all of that. Going to twelve-thirty introduces you need to have a little bit of a break. So now you're adding ninety minutes on top of that, which is what I said to you earlier, it's, you're really increasing the educational time, yeah, every time. That answer your question in terms of the, there aren't any cons that we've seen. No one's come back and said, actually, let me take that back. The only negatives that we've heard is there were parents who believe that, from a maturity point of view, their sons and daughters are not ready to be here for that, right? There's no evidence about that in any of the material we've seen. But if that's a parental concern, today, you have the option to say, I choose to not come in, that's okay. If it was mandated, part of the question with the bill is, is that, is your son or daughter have to meet the attendance requirement in order to get to first grade, right? That would be a big difference, maybe. Right? Like, if students say, you can have straight A's, but if you miss sixty days of school, you can't progress a little bit, especially, you have to meet your attendance requirement as well as your grades. So it'd be interesting to see what the bill goes up.
I have the bill in my email, because I was looking at it, thanks to Mr. Foyng. It's Senate Number Ten Fifty-Five, so S-ten fifty-five, it was introduced January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Does anyone look it up?
Does this say that if there's an assembly version of the bill?
Yeah, there is.
There is, right? Okay.
Hasn't there been a bill pending there over the last five, six, seven years?
Yes, yes. So, yeah. So.
I've been following it pretty closely, and they're really...
No one, no one's gotten out of this bill being passed.
I think the challenge, the challenge of the bill is not the merits of the bill, the challenge of the bill is, the state has to be very careful. If the state, and there's some case history about this, in different states in the country, where if the state imposes a mandate and does not pay for it, that becomes a very problematic.
Hi. I'm Danielle Zrier, twelve Howard Tree, Kingston, of course. Forest Avenue, that's right. Okay, so I'm asking for a friend. If it is voted on this fall, and there was rumors that it would be implemented in the January, she's concerned, because her daughter is going into kindergarten this year, and she'll be a very young part, to create a schedule and get that rhythm with the kids, like changing at mid-year, is there benefit for that, or can we wait till the fall, or is there any possibility that it would be implemented in the fall instead of January?
We have looked at other districts who have also implemented it mid-year. We're thinking actually more like February now, because that really is about five months remaining in the school year, it's about the midpoint, the beginning of February. So, and then moving forward after this year, it will be full-time, a full day for everyone, starting in September. Correct.
I'm Toba Copan, twenty-nine Pinewood Avenue, McEthan Brown. I just wanted to first come up here, I guess I'm sort of the, the rain leader of the band of parents who sort of stormed up here last April and said, what's going on with full-day kindergarten, what, you know, what's happening? And I wanted to thank the board, and not to turn my back to you, but especially the principals, for really kind of taking the lead on this, working with the kindergarten teachers, really reading all the studies, and there are a lot out there about the benefits of full-day kindergarten. Not any studies about the cons, lots of, you know, anecdotal, like I think you were alluding to, but lots of benefits of full-day kindergarten. And so I just wanted to thank them for really sort of taking this lead and figuring out how much it was going to cost, and doing those studies, and working with the kindergarten teachers. And the kindergarten teachers have been great about it as well. And as you know, now we have this group within the school, a very well-informed people, that you can always go up and ask a principal a question, but we also have a parent-led organization, or band of parents, I suppose, that will be spending the next five, six months really educating the community. We have, or will, in the process, so you'll see it in the next few days, popping up on Facebook. We do have a Facebook group, so if you want to get involved, we're going to make sure you can find us. It's called Improving Verona Height, it will probably change its name to Verona Full-Day Height. We're going to have a webpage on Facebook, we have a website that we'll be sharing with everybody, that will link to the board's website, we have frequently asked questions, we'll make sure they all line up, so it's not confusing. And so it's, you're going to have the opportunity to learn, as much as everyone up here knows, there'll be links to studies, if you really want to sit down and read some good studies. But it's, it's there, and we really see this whole initiative depends on people being well-informed about the facts, accurate facts, the benefits of how much this costs, what the benefits are to the students, not just in kindergarten, but I think, as the principals alluded to it, from kindergarten all the way through, at the very least, elementary school, and then beyond. So we're going to be out there, if you want to get involved, believe me, we will let you get involved to help spread it. But the biggest reason I'm standing here, and the principals have already said this, but if you have a question, if you have a concern, I know a lot of people, because I think I'm now been called by multiple people, oh, you're the kindergarten lady. So a lot of people have come to me and asked questions, and if you have a question, it probably means that ten other people have questions, the exact same one. And rather than not getting an accurate answer to the question, you know, once we have the group up, feel free to reach out to me or the principals, so that we are all on the same page, so that there aren't rumors spreading, and so that we are really clear with how everything will be laid out. And then, if you don't want to vote for it, great, but I just want to make sure that everyone has all the facts, and we're all on the same page. So like I said, if you have questions, concern, excuse me, concerns, the principals are here, the board's here, but also, there is a large group of parents that will be ready to answer any questions that you have. So, thank you again.
Just a frequently asked question, so this will be posted...
Tomorrow, we will be posting three important documents. We'll be posting this slide presentation on our website, it will be on the district website, it will be on the front page of every school website. In addition to that, there will be access to this board presentation video on the website as well. In addition to a document that will be hyperlinked to the end of this slide presentation, which will be frequently asked questions, which is already prepared, and the only reason we didn't prepare it and share it tonight is because we anticipated some really good questions that we didn't think about, and all the clue does in that document as well.
So if you get more interesting frequently asked questions, now, easy for us to update that, so the principals get that, just get that, central office, and we'll post those as updates to that doc.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I have a quick question, maybe Mr. Miller, or Dr. Dinesh. So right now, with our three-quarter day, are our kids at a detriment? Like, when you look at our list of accomplishments, or the list of schools that were up on the slide, are our graduating seniors behind and not doing as well as the other districts? Because our...
Mr. Miller, if you chime in if you'd like. My, my position on that would be, I think we, our teachers do an incredible job with the amount of time that our students are allotted. They do an awful lot in a short amount of time, they do an absolutely amazing job. And all the research shows that our students would only benefit even more greatly from the added time and the added benefit. And with the direction that we've been moving the district over the past ten, fifteen years, and we're adding more and more and engaging students as they mature and get older into deep-level thinking and inquiry, and that takes time. And in order to do instruction really well, we need to provide that necessary time in order to carry out those goals and objectives. Mr. Miller, would you, anything else to add on this?
I think that you summed it up pretty well.
So we're not lagging behind right now, but it would just be nice if we have, actually, one.
Especially meeting all the goals that we have, yes?
Another thing I can say is, and principals can acknowledge this, and if we have teachers in the audience, kindergarten is a very difficult age to teach. We come in with all different levels of learning, so I think by gaining more time, and one of the lines said, we would have kids more ready by grade three, so I think we'd even be stronger, but I think our teachers do a great job with what we have right now.
Yeah, so I think, just as being on education committee for so long, that grade three, if you can elaborate on that, does everybody understand that, that meaningfulness of grade three, in layperson's terms, is, all the evidence indicates that, like, if you're not reading at grade three level by sometime in grade three, your trajectories for the remainder of your education experience is going to be much more difficult.
And to that point, that's where we're also...
So you're adding, you know, you're not adding time, sorry, you're not adding time to the fourth grade, you're adding it to the beginning of your grade, you're just trying to create a better runway to get to grade three. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, like, we even have academic coaches now.
Academic literacy coaches, and the Warren Gilliam program, in order to target the students that are lagging behind in their early grades.
I have a question as well, and I don't know if any of the studies that you were researching have come across this, and I think the one parent was asking about unstructured play. Since we're moving to more of an inquiry-based curriculum, I'm kind of curious of the benefits or lack thereof of, I'm trying to think of how to word my question, not having unstructured play, and how that affects a child's self-directed executive function skill. Have you come across anything in your studies?
I don't think we saw anything about that, but just to go over unstructured play, the way the day would work, we'd actually be giving the unstructured time, where they don't have it now, in the day. So we're saying at lunchtime, you now have the lunchtime, and then that twenty-minute recess period where it's totally unstructured, and we'll still have the center time, you're going to have more of it. So we are adding that. Over the past few years, I've had a number of parents, maybe some that are sitting in the weekends now, who have come to me and said, we don't give enough of that within the kindergarten day, because we only have it four hours, so we try to pack that in as best we can, but now we'll have the opportunity to add that, so that is a good point. But I haven't, unless my colleagues have seen any other studies on that.
Your presentation actually says structured recess and lunch, so if...
Well, when we say structured, we mean official recess and lunch, right now...
Not structured within what they're...
Correct. Like, when we say structured, we mean like the twenty-minute recess, twenty-minute lunch, where there's going to be...
It's an adult plan.
Yes. Right now, right now, the kids leave at twelve-thirty, and there's no structured lunch, they go home and have it, or just come day after care.
Sorry, forgotten Mrs. Bird. How's your farce, Brenda?
I think you guys hear me.
Hi, Christine McGrath, fifty-seventh Fairway Avenue, Forest Avenue section. Actually, I wanted to follow up, your question was great, because I wanted to just make more of an observation. I have... I have a first grader and a child that had HB. And kindergarten now is a really intense experience in Verona because that day is really non-stop for them. And for some of them, it's really difficult. So it could be emotionally difficult. It could be tough academically. And it can be tough with behavior. And we've seen certainly certain classroom situations where some kids really can't fit in that very structured box of the day. So I think by expanding the day, we get a lot of benefits. Some of you may not even realize that there are some parents who, even though they have a stay-at-home parent, they still send their kids to aftercare so that they can get the experience of socialization and free play with their peers in kindergarten. Because the truth is for most of the kindergarten students in Verona, on a daily basis, they are not going outside for one breath of air for recess. And it's very difficult as a parent, when your child says, I don't understand why we're not going on the playground, to answer that as a question. So I think in some ways it will be a relief if we can extend the day and put a little breathing room. And I think a lot of parents would argue they would love to see even more free time and outdoor, like even a second break where the kids can get some fresh air a second time. We know that the studies are there, that it benefits children. Children, they're the same children we were when we were five years old. So we needed a lot of structured outdoor time. And there are some parents, and so if we can somehow work this into the frequently asked questions, I know Toba will. But there are a lot of older parents, which now I guess the ones that I don't have a kid in the mix, who will vote against this because they feel, no, the best time was when my kids came home from school and they could play outside and we could go do swimming lessons and do all these magical things in this period of time before the other kids got out of school. So we do have to work on that messaging. And I liked what you said about the long-term benefits and how this is really helping children in the long term. And I think everyone here who's an advocate for full-day K, we have to stay focused on that. But also please recognize that these children do need to play and have unstructured time. And so as you're continuing maybe to tweak this or thinking about implementation plans to keep an eye on them. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Halsey, 53 Lyndon Avenue, Planning Section. I'm not sure if this is exactly the right form, but just in the interest of making sure that everyone understands talking points and things that might come up. Has anyone considered how the referendum will match up with the tax reappraisal that we're going through in Verona in terms of timing and how that would...
Yeah, so that's a good question. We'll answer that one too. So, and that one in particular is difficult to write into Frequently Asked Questions because this is... So we give them the best criteria. So the first thing is the reassessment of property values by law. Let me back up. The budgets that the board bed, the county, township come up with operate within their own values. Whatever that bill is gets imposed on homeowners as a tax. Okay, it's not the other way around. It's not that we generate a tax and then go figure out how much money we can spend in the budget. The budget defines the tax. When the township does, which they're obligated to do on a certain schedule, a reassessment, there is no increase to budgets or decrease in the budget. It's budget neutral 100% of the time. All they're doing is recalibrating property values to equalize them across the entirety of the town. Right? Everything from property size, the age of the home, number of bathrooms, bedrooms, all of this. So the average number, that $42 to the average home is simply a matter of there are approximately 5,200 homes in Verona. Take the $215,000 divided by the number of homes in Verona, it comes out to $42,000. When you're reassessing, if your property taxes go up, somebody else's will have gone down. Nobody ever admits that their taxes went down. I can tell you, that happens. So that average is going to still be the average. It won't change. Because the average is not how much you're assessed. It's going to be, it's still going to be $215,000 to do this, whether they change your assessment or not. On a, our budget is, we're going to deal with $34 million. So let's just say, so take $34 million, divide it across every house in Verona, if every house was comparable, that's your property. So if we, the reassessments, some go up, some go down, it's still $34 million in total, in which case it would still be $42 to the average home.
Okay. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that like for parent advocates, that if that comes up for us, that we're, you know, when we're talking to people and trying to say like, the 42 is not also in addition to this massive increase in your...
Or decrease.
You know, or decrease potentially. I'm worried about timing because, you know...
Yeah, it's, you know, with the way the gods, when the...
Yeah, yeah.
Sort of be a wonder, right? But I can tell you with the property reassessment, this is the second time, I think, in recent history that we're having one of these. And the number-one misconception is that it's a way to to name a more money out of people's pockets into the coffers of the town and squawk through the budget. That's absolutely not a case. It's neutral, completely different. The budget defines the bill. The bill gets allocated to the homeowners. You reassess how much any homeowner pays, but the total collected is still close to this.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Frizzy. I was at Lanning and at Forest Avenue School. I have a quick question. What about safety with this? Because you're going to have Forest Avenue and F and Brown, you're going to have 20% more kids getting out at the same time. And if you've ever gone down to Forest Avenue at 2:45, it's really dangerous. So if parents maybe make a conscious decision, maybe either you drive less, but then I'm really concerned about safety. And I have older kids and we always went out for kindergarten. So I don't know if maybe the curriculum's changed, but we always went out for curriculum, recess. And, you know, 12:30 was a long day for my kids. So, but, and I don't think I'm going to be against this, but it's just the whole package and it's just bringing in more money. Because I would say as a parent of older kids, college is expensive. AP test scores are expensive. Sports are expensive. So what we need to do as a community, make these decisions of our priorities. And I can honestly, I don't think you can dictate like, oh gosh, if they go to all-day kindergarten, are they going to get into Harvard? Because we have kids that are in Harvard. We've got kids in Ivy League. We've got kids in the military. We've got great kids in the school district. So I don't think an all-day kindergarten is going to make us greater. It might make us different or more like everyone else. But I really, that's my, and that's all I really have to say, but just the safety issue. And I know it's an issue that there might not be a lot of studies on, but it's an anecdotal study if you drive down that street because it's really dangerous driving to Forest Avenue after school. So thanks.
Yeah, so the question of safety does come up often. And two things about that. One, for example, here at the high school, we have about 10% more students, about 100 more students in total than we had, you know, than we had five years ago. And I remember on the seniors, a lot of them are drivers with not a lot of driving experience, driving usually dad and mom's car in a parking lot all at one time, you know. And just, you know, it just gets, it gets unwieldy. With safety though, there's another dynamic that's worth mentioning. If you look at the, one of the things that we look at in the census data is the percentage of homes in town, if you're on the board red, you look, this is the kind of riveting stuff you look at, the percentage of homes in town that have family members under the age of 18. Now, I talked before about doing the library census studies and that gives you a forecast. Why is this other statistic so important? Well, it's important because number one, it only comes just about around about once in a decade. And you can get interim changes to that that are not highly scientific, but they're out there. One big difference in Verona today from the Verona 15 years ago, when I first got on the board bed, is 15 years ago, the percentage of homes that had children 18 years or younger was somewhere in the, it was 50-odd percent of it. And I remember looking at other towns, the other kinds of towns that are in those in that list of comparable districts. And the one thing that like when Ridge had on Verona, and at the time we used to vote on the budget, we were always terrified of the budget being voted down. And we tried to do referendum for the fields and the answer was no, et cetera, et cetera. And when we compared it to the other towns, the other towns had north of 60% of their homes had students, had family members under the age of 18. So you had a, you had a different makeup of families in town with school-aged children. That's happened since then. Now we're into the north of 60%. Our student population now is 20, about 2,200 students. So we're up about 10% on the referendum for the fields. It passed so positively 10 years ago, that might not have been the case. So, you know, we should put them for vote and let people vote. If the community is changing and shifting in its demographic and characteristics, then vote. We don't get, we don't get to increase the budget because population increases. We still have to operate with the same contract of ours.
I have a question for the other panel that did research. I mean, I think you did. As many of you know, this is not the first time we've looked at this issue. I've been on the board for a long time and we've done a referendum once before. I think we've looked at it seriously once before during my time here. And I just remember the research from those two time periods were that definitely benefits, but mostly benefits were seen in a social group. Significantly lower, it's lower than there is in Verona in many places where English is a second language. And that also, that some of these benefits faded out by the third or fourth year, third, fourth grade. Has research changed it? Maybe you just let it at work?
One of the, one of the studies that we read was that students tend to be more on a grade level if they're a grade regardless of socioeconomic. And it is interesting though, speaking of F and Brown, because we are the ESL Magnet School. And, you know, we have 10% of our population is English language learner. So actually, I'm glad you're pointing that out because it's definitely a benefit for F and Brown in particular. So that was by default, you know, we got it shared, so I appreciate that.
Well, those students all come from across Verona, right?
They're from, they're from across Verona, yes. We're the magnet, so no matter where you live in Verona, if you qualify and accept service, you attend F and Brown. So we're benefiting the greater good of the whole community. It's not just F and Brown residents. So they are showing third and fourth grade, you know, the students are at a greater chance of being on a grade level. And then also in terms of safety, that was such a key point. But I do want to share something in terms of, I don't have a statistic in front of me to say 10% or 20%, but I do want to point out that, speaking for myself and also the other schools, that a lot of our kindergartners do not leave at 12:30. They go to extended K with YMCA. So most of our kids, because of siblings, they're exiting at 2:45. And also a lot are staying until 4, 5, 6 o'clock with their siblings. So I can understand someone thinking, well, now we're going to have X number of students added to the 2:45 dismissal. And yes, there will be added students, but it's not going to be every student because right now we have students staying. That it's not like we have this major exit at 12:30 and now we're adding to it because they're already leaving at 2:45 or 5 o'clock regardless. I hope we answered your question. My slide had the one with the research about the ages in third grade.
Hi, I'm Sarah Drapi. I'm a 12 Malver in the Lanning section. I wanted to add some information about the benefits, specifically in terms of reaching children who are at risk. So we're not talking about socioeconomic status. Specifically, we're talking about students that may be referred to the child study team, students that have received early intervention. When they have a full day of kindergarten, particularly looking at this curriculum, I don't know if you're familiar with Foundations and Orton Gilliam, that is really targeted intervention. So what that means is that that teacher now has the opportunity to take those two or three students who still don't understand that A says "ah" or B says "boop", and that can get taught directly to those students. Whereas in an extended day, there just isn't enough time for that. And in the end, you end up reducing the overall cost of special services needed past third grade, which I know after watching some of the budget meetings, that was a big moaning room for a lot of people. And it's hard to swallow when you're talking about 30% of the population needing special services. So when you have a full day of kindergarten, you really allow for those specific students to be reached and you're reducing the overall cost past third grade. And again, we still talk about that third grade as being a benchmark. It really is a make or break here. And for those of you that have been through third grade, you know, it's like things like multiplication start and they're reading chapter books. And they have to make deep inferences about theme and things like that. And if you don't have those fundamentals of reading, decoding, being able to sound out words, sound letter correlations that you learn in kindergarten, then third grade gets a lot more difficult.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Now the baby's quiet.
Okay, well, thank you everyone for coming. Thank you for your opinions. Thank you for your...
Oh, sorry. Is there more discussion or we just talked kindergarten?
Just, well, don't get... You've got to preach or something, doesn't it? Okay. So, so again, we have frequently asked questions that resonate. Get them into the administrative team, principals, and we'll get them off to the frequently asked questions. We should probably do a refresher on this in the fall because, you know, we want to get the board out there because the analysis that you guys have done and the things have done is all terrific now, and we should probably do a refresher prior to November election time.
We could do it at the beginning of October.
And then you can put the rest, any of the questions that come up that they could be better answered. Okay?
I'd just like to thank the principals and kindergarten teachers for all their efforts. So they deserve a round of applause for all of the work this year. Thank you for your participation and for presenting tonight as well. Thank you very much.
A next presentation is Ms. Carol Thomas representing... Ms. Thomas is here as the Verona Education Association Vice President. And this is an annual presentation that Ms. Thomas and the BEA do each spring and to enlighten the community on some of the good work above and beyond that goes on in the future day and as in their set positions that benefits the district and students at home.
Good evening. As I think it's your seventh, Ms. Carol Thomas. I happen to be the Vice President of the Verona Education Association, which is a labor organization that represents the teachers, custodians, the secretaries, administrative assistants, excuse me, well, counselors and everybody involved with that. So fortunately, this is our third annual presentation, so we can fill you all in on what we can offer. Unfortunately, this is a different format than I've done before. So let me get rid of all these devices here, excuse me, so I can do what I'm supposed to do. First, the purpose of the pride program and that's what the... First, the purpose of the Pride Program, and that's what both of these programs are called, the Pride Program, is to foster positive community relationships in our township and to enhance the educational opportunities for our students. So to carry out this mission, we undertake several different projects a year, and I'd just like to share some of those we do tonight. Most of these are in chronological order. So in the fall, we were, it's not a happy, but we welcomed the chance to partner with Out of the Darkness Walk, which we were considered a major partner this year in the Out of the Darkness Walk. In addition to that, many of our members did walk, so we raised additional funds for the cause there also. This should be a partnership that we should anticipate us staying involved with for quite a while. Most of you know the background and the, or connections in town with the Out of the Darkness Walk. Then we, because September was suicide awareness month, the association was really happy to buy, and this was a trend across the state, we purchased items for the school sports team in September to wear during the September in commemoration of the suicide awareness. You can see the football players all have their purple socks on. Coincidentally, the team they were playing were also memorializing that idea the same night, so both teams had their purple socks on. It was really, it was enlightening and heartening to see them, all the guys out there together. And different teams had the different teal colored wraps, and those are the two different colors for suicide awareness. So we were really happy to be able to love with that. The Penny family, I know that Verona really embraces, the Penny family always has. So this was, this is Kylie, Kyla, excuse me, from Forest reached out and said, you know, can we partner with the Walk? I said absolutely, I don't know why I didn't think of it before this. So we were a major sponsor of the Miles of Hope Team Zoe Turkey Trot the Fall, and we had a number of teachers participate in that also. Another project we were glad to sponsor this year was the Marching Run and Wait Band Competition. So we made a donation to the band competition, but we also gave out, we distributed seat cushions, which, if you've ever been to this competition in November, this year it was warm, but some years it's pretty cold. So we were really glad to be able to contribute to the band competition. We were especially happy to contribute to this year's overall swim team. We even made the first meet. So we pick a couple of teams a year to try and sponsor. So in the fall was the swim team, and there was others in the spring. This is near and dear to my heart. The V E A was really glad to work with the Green Team. And, well, first of all, the Green Team is a group of teachers, custodians, administrators in town, and our teachers of all, volunteers, custodians, different people on the staff to work to really foster and move ahead our recycling plans and our sustainability ideas. So at H B, the V E A purchased a water fountain, a refilling station, and eight hundred water bottles. So each one of the students in H B and all the staff, as a matter of fact, received a water bottle. And we're up to close to four thousand on our counter. That supposedly, that's how many water bottles we save, but we're continuing our mission in that direction. We've participated in the expo at the Livingston Mall, which is the Esses County Pride and Public Education Expo for many, many years. This is an example of some of the work from the elementary schools and the high school. Our fine arts teachers are just the best. You'll all admit that. Mrs. Rulo, Mrs. Jay, Mr. Sultan Makiya, Mrs. Sherman, and Mrs. Elakalini McAvoy, McLaughlin, excuse me, and Miss Shippa Tonnell all submitted projects to the expo. This year, Ms. Hearth has also submitted projects from the middle school, the TED, Technology Engineering Design, right? I want to call it the old thing. So these are her projects, and she also painted and helped me set it up this year, which was a ton of work. And Mr. Jay Oloya from the town also helped us out, and his help is invaluable, honestly. These are some more projects from Mr. Sultan Makiya, some from the high school. And so if you've ever had a chance to go to the mall and see that, it's really, there's council mall of the place. Mr. Farrell sends projects to from the... During that week, we also run the Esses County Pride Contest winners. And in Verona, we had three of our students placed in the top three in the county. Addie Walker, Mrs. Walker's daughter, was second grade, right? And then they're invited to come to the expo and read their essays. And in the fifth grade, this is Eliza, and Eliza read her essay, and her teacher, Mrs. Shama, had a chance to come and watch her read that. And we go back so I don't miss Allison's. Allison Vasquez was the third winner to place from Verona. But we had participants in seven different grade levels, teachers from all over town. So this is something extra, the teachers are, you know, they're not mandated to do this. It's something that they volunteer to help out with and have their children write the essays regarding pride, that they've pried themselves in their schools. We were really happy to sponsor the H B W Spring Musical this spring. We've been doing this for a couple of years. This year was Annie Junior, one of our cast members. And a pretty big cast at the middle school. I so admire those teachers that are the directors, because that's a lot of energy and they do a phenomenal job. They do a phenomenal job, so. And that's why the Verona Education Association does these projects. It's really to highlight what our teachers are doing and how we can partner with our students and with the town to just provide our students some extra opportunities. If you're from Forest or Lanning, you know that Mrs. Rulo just puts on a fabulous art show every year. And the association makes a contribution the last several years to the parent workshops that are in the classroom. So this year was the paper flowers that were made in the classroom. Those are, we bought those so that the, you could make those flowers. And then they were supposed to come down, not to, well, when I took the picture, they hadn't all reached, and this was from Forest. I imagine Lanning had the same. And some of it reminded the custodians name that they built the bridge.
Giuseppe.
Giuseppe from...
Auburn.
From Lanning that built the bridge. So it's an all-in effort. Everybody gets involved in these projects. So these are some of the classroom projects. You might recognize Mrs. Cesario's children there that came to visit and made some flowers. These are from, pictures from last year, because the art show here hasn't happened yet, correct? But if we go to the art show, and whether you have children here or not, it's fun to bring your children to go see. The mosaics are phenomenal. Everybody agrees. I mean, all the work is, but everybody really admires the mosaics. And we're fortunate enough to have to provide money for Mrs. Sherman to buy that glass, because it has gotten expensive. So she makes the effort, she goes out, she buys the glass. We reimburse her for all those projects. Our spring sports this year that we donated to, provided sponsorship to, was the lacrosse. Last year it was softball. We also sponsor a boys' and girls' softball and baseball team. This is an older picture, but the girls' softball is from, is current, my, I didn't get my packet for the boys' team, so that was a little older, but we have both teams that we sponsor. We sponsor at the major level, but there's not enough major teams, so we have some rookie teams in here for you with the, you know, baseball softball. We were really excited this year to partner with Mrs. Walker and take over the funding for One District, One Book. This is really something that we would love to continue to be able to do in the future. I only have pictures from a couple of schools, but I was able to make it to Brookdale. It was exciting to see how excited all the children were. And the studio and the whole staff out with the kids and Mrs. Walker, it was a really a nice celebration. The weather was fabulous. And then F M Brown, the same thing. It was association provided between the books and the trees. And I know Mountain Valley gave us a good price, I'm going to throw them in, it gave us a good price on the trees. But, so we'll make sure our funding is, we have enough funding next year to be able to do that. But it's not, it's not a small project. And the activities that Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Free have put together along with the rest of the staff and the principals of the elementary school is really, really to be admired. And so Walt's Hold was probably about fifteen thousand dollars this year in sponsorships and goods and services from the Verona Education Association, otherwise known as the... So if there's any questions, I can...
I just wanted to chime in real quick. I mean, that list is pretty impressive. I actually was involved with my family participating in some of those events, and I know a lot of my neighbors and relatives that were involved too. But just going down a list of the Out of Darkness and then sponsoring teams like the swim team, which is brand new, and a lot of these other events involving the arts, very, very impressive. So I want to thank the V E A for sponsoring, contributing, donating to the causes. So, okay.
So for our community, like I said, Ms. Thomas does this every year.
We're trying to...
Yeah, trying to make sure that this is not just showcased, but that we as a community appreciate that what the teachers do. You know, no secret how much teachers devote of their own time and in many cases, their own money to what they do in the classroom. But on top of that, what the V E A does for us as a community is really what this is about. It goes above and beyond what happens in the classroom. And for us as a community, it's important that we always recognize that the ingredients to have a great school district is about the same ingredients to have a great community. People that care, people that are respectful and integrated, and people that are all pulling on the same boards at the same time. So appreciate all the help from the community. Thank you. Superbendit Report?
Just a few brief updates. As everyone knows, we've had a number of budget meetings in public session. We also have Ms. Nardino, Mr. Miller, and I have gone to three of the six schools. We've had meetings with the S D As at each of those schools, so small forums to be able to present at the local level and be able to answer any questions. So those have been productive and informative, and we have three more that are slated over the next two weeks. And then a few updates quickly. I just want to recognize some of our spring sports. They are, many of them are starting to come to a close, but it's important to recognize them. We will have Mr. Merkler, who will be here, I believe it's at the next meeting, to give an athletic update for the spring sports, so we look forward to that. On the softball front, the girls' softball, we advanced to the county semifinals. For what we believe, Mr. Merkler believes is the first time in history, unfortunately, we lost to a great Cedar Grove team there, but our young ladies played extremely, extremely well, and they played this afternoon versus Caldwell. I'm still waiting for the text message to see how we did, and I haven't been on Twitter, so. Our golf team has done a great job this year performing, and kudos to one young man in particular, the team has done very, very well. But Jack Strappoli, he just won Group One Individual State Championship the other day. Round of applause for him. To those of you, to those of you who know golf, he shot a seventy-five at Hopewell Valley. He's shot lower than that before, and he won states, so he's just an incredible golfer, great young man, so hat off to him. So it's not unusual for him to shoot thirty-five and thirty-seven on nine holes, so he's an incredible golfer. Girls' track won their second straight conference championship, so wonderful job for them. And boys' tennis advanced to the quarterfinals of the state tournament. Boys' track, another moment here, actually, it's a Verona High School record for pole vault. Owen Fogarty, currently a sophomore, just recently pole vaulted thirteen feet. Previous record at Verona High School was twelve and a half feet. So that's quite an accomplishment. So a nice round of applause for Owen Fogarty. Baseball had a tough loss yesterday to Hanover Park, but they are in the state tournament, and they're having a good season and been playing very well. And last but not least, the girls' lacrosse team advanced to the quarterfinals of the state tournament. So a lot of accomplishments this season, as usual. We'll have Mr. Merkler at the next board meeting, who will come and highlight students and teams in particular, and give us a more robust round of spring sports. So that's it for the Superbendit Report.
Any questions without D N C O? We have one committee report, which was finance. So it was, it was, so our finance committee met yesterday morning. It was relatively business as usual. It was a mark-to-market on the budget for this year that we're in now with some debate, not debate, dialogue about some of the elements of the budget that's still halfway in flux for this current budget year as invoices come in, the services, and all sorts of things. We'll be watching that, there's no D N O without D N C O in the coming month and a half. And then separate from that, we are going to be presenting, although it may not be ready by the time we have our last meeting in June, but this would be a bit, when we did the budget presentation, one of the highlights out there was around the special education portion of our budget. We summarized the budget by four categories, there's five categories. One of the categories is special education. The reason why we show that is because it has a growth trajectory or impact to the budget year over year that's outsized to what our constraints are on the budget. So we show that, that it's a very, very distinct group of students that have special needs that we are morally and legally obligated to satisfy, and we do the best job that we can on that. Now that said, the budget did increase by about eleven percent year over year from last year, from the current year to right now, to the year starting July first, to the coming school year. So we wanted to break down how that cost manifested itself across salaries, paraprofessionals, tuitions, transportation, and the other categories. We'll be presenting this hopefully before the end of June. There's some questions and refine what we have to do on the message that is telling us, and we need to meet with, without Director of Special Services and Dr. D N C O to finalize all that. So that'll be... All right. I don't think we have any discussion next for today?
You know, one thing that I wanted to bring up, John, is Dr. D N C O and I had spoke briefly about is the idea of potentially having a personnel committee?
Oh, yeah, you mentioned it, yes. So, yeah, so we have five board committees, which allows every board member to, to be on two committees. So every committee has two board members, and then Dr. D N C O, and then whoever, the right combination of administrators are around that, whatever that topic is. So it's curriculum, there's finance, there's buildings and grounds, there's athletics, and then there's community resources. So adding one more committee disrupts the balance of committee committees one would be on it, right? So one thing that we can do is we can cover, these are the options, cover personnel matters in our confidential meetings, because we discuss personnel matters in budget anyway, as a full board, but formalize that, so it's limited, et cetera, memorialized. That's one way to do it. Another way to do it would be to have the Community Resources Committee, which is on the lighter side of the agenda compared to the other committees, also act as our focused Personnel Committee. And it's still, you know, all personnel matters become board business like any other resolution, but at least it will give time for board representation and governance with the administrative team to go through matters that involve personnel. So think about that, and then we can talk about that in the next meeting.
So the quick question that comes to the top of my head, if we did it in committee form, then when it comes time to do a committee report, we pretty much are going to say we can't have a committee report, which is not...
We would do it in confidential meetings.
Well, you would, because then the resolutions are going to be on the...
So would really the only what it's going to be called?
Once the topic is, if the topic becomes public, it's public.
Yeah, right.
But any other things, we would be able to committee report essentially, it's not... Okay, let's do our resolutions.
Just with the only time...
Dr. D N C O, all the success we've had in April this spring, but as I seem to do on society, you know, he's walking. I just want to take a moment to congratulate him. It's a great accomplishment for everyone, and that does have the honor as a chief representative. And it definitely subject on society is a... And it definitely subject on society is what we got, society.
That's a great point. And just to piggyback on that, did we just add science on National Arts Society?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's great.
A few weeks ago, we had the world language on our society. It was after school here in the Learning Commons, and that was all three languages. A great achievement.
I believe Mrs. Ho is reading up with my science, I want. So now pulling that, you have your Mandarin High School AP teacher, and you're gonna eat the lunch.
That's amazing. You have to go all the way across the world to eat the lunch.
Her family's from less than an hour worth of city.
Wow, there is that.
I missed our resolutions.
We've adopted the board approved Resolutions Number One through Number Twenty and Addendum Resolutions One, Two, and Three.
Second, move by Ms. Fressky and second is obviously today. Any questions on, or comments on this?
Yes. On Resolution Two Point One, as it implies, I just have a question on the paraprofessional and the subparaprofessional as the hourly difference. So the reason why, so the paraprofessional is fourteen dollars and fifty cents, and the reason why the subparaprofessional professional is fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents is because there are different hours or different paraprofessionals. So if they sub for different people, it's broken down by hour, because they may work a whole day, that will equate to ninety dollars. However, if they work for somebody that just has a two-hour court shift or a three-hour half-day, then we're paying them on the hourly rate. Right, so if they work the whole day at fifteen twenty-five, that is ninety dollars. Okay. On Resolution Number Nine, the VC staff of the summer. So my question is, is that, I should know this and I don't, is that a tuition pay program? So does the tuition offset this cost? Does it totally cover it, or?
Yes.
Yep, it's a fully supportive by that tuition.
Ms. Berman, do you have a question?
I have not, I have the same question.
Mr. Dead?
Yes.
Mrs. Borargino?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Hi.
Mrs. Fressky? Yes, Mr. Quetz Riquel.
Hi. Okay, that, one thing, Resolution Number Twelve Point Two, band staff, it's just, I just realized this, there's a couple of names on this that we approved for band staff, who, for folks that are here from kindergarten parents, I remember these, these folks from kindergarten, so. And now they've graduated, gone to their private college or into college, so they're massive coming back as part-time instructors for the band program, so we'll have to go home, take a cold chat. All right, any questions in the public, those gentlemen that's here on the other end?
Nathan Lanty, three second place. I'm in the Brookdale section. I have a first and third grader at Brookdale, and a fifth grader at H.B. Whitehorn, and my wife is a educational agent, so very involved in Verona. Also, I was up here just a week shy, four months ago, talking to you about the absence of GNT funding in our elementary schools. When we left, we spoke that we were gonna speak about this off terms, and we did, and the comment was the principals were going to be working together to come up with a creative options because of budget constraints. I haven't heard anything yet, but I'm sure they're still in words of that. But I do want to bring up one topic that, just to challenge you guys, definitely hard budget times. As the student knows, I'm active in my kids' education, I advocate, and also trying to get an active role as well. I propose as a way to help give enrichment opportunities for kids without having to have parents pay for them, I offer my time before work, that I actually take away from work, to do a before-school chess club for the kids at Brookdale. This is something that we've done at our other school districts, I was parent-run, fantastic involvement, kids, it's a great way to stimulate kids before school. That was denied, and there's different reasons, and I completely understand for those issues, but I guess two things really stuck out to me. One thing was a comment that said, if we say yes to you, then we'll have to say yes to everyone else, and that is fantastic. And I think that should never be a concern, because parental involvement is what makes schools fantastic. So this should be something, especially in a tough budget time, how can we get our parents more involved with the school interaction, the school environment? And now, and somebody brought this up, how about during lunch hours? Well, that's great for the non-working parent, but for the working parents before school, probably is the only time that everything can be involved. So that comment, and then there was another comment that said, well, if we do it for Brookdale, we have to do it for all the other schools. I'm sorry, I'm gonna be an advocate for my own child. If I'm gonna do this, I hope that other parents will do that at other schools, but I should not be hindered from helping out the educational expense for my children in school just because other parents don't choose to have the same involvement. And then lastly, the other issue was too much liability, which is understanding. You need to have a teacher on staff, and with budget cuts, we can't do that. My comeback is, this is New Jersey, let's be creative, let's figure out how to, how to work in an arrangement that allows us to still cover self-loability, but allow for parent-run before-school activities that are enrichment-focused. So if that's, I grew up, there was parents who came and taught French class, parents who taught a knitting class, different things like this, they bring their passions to kids, and it's something that hopefully we can, as you guys come up with your own ideas, maybe rethink my opportunity. I still hold that, I would be happy to gather up some parents I'd had, I actually have a budget too, that I would happily go to our SCA for the floor mats and for the chess. It's really not that big an investment, and the return on our investment is extremely fruitful. So I guess I'll wait to hear from you guys on the...
Yeah, I could also comment a little bit on that in public as well. So Mr. Lanty and I have had a number of conversations, very productive, really insightful, I think on both sides. I know you've spoken with Mr. Miller as well. So Mr. Miller and principals are doing, as they always do, continuous work with the GNT and looking at more creative ways, and how can we always continue to make it more robust? On the piece, just for clarification sake for the public, there, we appreciate any efforts from parents, anytime they want to volunteer. And we're very fortunate that in Verona, we have a community that is willing to give up their time and volunteer their time to help support our teachers in the classroom, to help support the schools, and to obviously help support their own children and other people's children as well. With all of that said, there is the dynamic, which is difficult to get around, which is naturally the liability and supervision piece. So we cannot just say we are going to allow a parent to be able to come in and do chess club, gymnastics club, wherever it may be, without a certificated district employee, staff member to be there. From a supervision standpoint, from a safety standpoint for children, that's our responsibility. So that's a little bit of a challenge, especially with budgetary constraints. Now, what I could tell you as well, and we're always looking for creative ways to be able to work around those things, so we just haven't gotten there yet. However, there are some other options. So we have been fortunate in the district to have Flex Academies come in this year to provide enrichment opportunities for our schools.
At a cost by parents.
There is a cost, but there's an opportunity as well for, based on whatever those rates would be, for parents to give up their time to Flex Academy, so that can be explored as well as an option, which would be much more drastically reduced and thereby mitigating the liability and the supervision issue that that's a problem. Because, speaking to the earlier point, we, if we could be able to do this across the board in all of our schools, that's fantastic. The challenge becomes that, based on the economy of it, if we have to start paying staff members per hour to supervise every single day in every single school, that all of a sudden starts to add up to a lot of dollars. And the budgetary constraints make that very challenging. So I'm not saying that there aren't ways around that, there certainly are ways to explore those options, but we just haven't found those options yet except for the Flex Academy.
There's one other, there's one other one as well, where we have a roster of parents and citizens that have volunteered to come in and augment what goes on in the teaching classrooms during the day. And it's come up, the reason why I mention this is it's come up in our strategic plan folks to participate in those forums as well, because one of the challenges with the program that we have today is we're long on folks who have volunteered the time and short on the number of people who have volunteered that can be here between the hours of ten and two in the afternoon, right? That becomes a core challenge. So, but it is something that's on the strategic plan, one of the subcommittees in strategic plan, that one, that they, how, there's a kind of thing they touch.
And another thing that was mentioned on the GNT program, I don't think I brought up last time, Verona's different than other school districts, many of them that we've been in, that the GNT is qualified by the top eighteen, the top fifteen percentile. In most school districts that we've been in, it's top three or top two, so when you start thinking about budgetary constraints, having that wide range, all that's great, it does, it's not the standard in most school districts. I do have one quick second other topic that seems like it's, might be, excuse me?
While you're looking for that, is Dr. Dinesh, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but the elementary schools used to have those after-school clusters, like Lego robotics or... Yeah, they haven't had it, but if I remember correctly, when my kids were there, that they would ask for parents, if you had some sort of specialty to come in. How did they handle that then? Was it just because there was still staff after school?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I'm not sure if Mr. Freud or Mr. Miller are aware, or we'd have to go perhaps back and talk to Mr. Monaselli, Dr. Lanzo may have some perspective on that.
Yeah, I was just remembering, I asked for the parents that had some sort of specialty to come in to do these clusters, but I don't know how it was handled.
And just so I say, my request is denied, and I know that's not because the student or we either felt that was not a justified idea, just, I just asked you guys to be creative and forgot how we can do this. My, I'm an advocate, my kids are only going to grade school for a few more years, I want to help out as much as I can right now. On a different note, so I, my family's new to Verona from, we're coming up on our, passing our fourth, first year, and when we were doing our house time, we really relied on the internet. We relied on blogs, we relied on different websites, and Zillow is getting a lot bigger, realair.com's getting a lot bigger by using school rankings. They tie their schools, like you, basically, I did not look at any community that didn't have high schools. It was, it was a first cross-off. Verona at that time did have high schools, but I don't know if you guys are aware of this, maybe it's something you are. And the GreatSchools.org, Brookdale is ranked as a four out of ten. We, Brookdale's test scores, six out of ten, student progress, one out of ten. We've got twenty-five percent proficient in math at Brookdale. Forest Abney, three out of ten. You better understand, I don't know if this is, if you guys are aware of this, but this is gonna hurt our, our house value, this is gonna hurt our recruitment of new transplants to the area, and it's gonna hurt our budget, because we're not gonna have the home value, because we can't draw the people here. I keep on going down here, again, Forest, Forest... GreatSchools.org, niche.com. What I'd say to you guys as the board here, I would assign somebody either on your team or on the board of directors to make them the advocate, because you have to reach out and interact with them, and make sure they're pulling the correct data, and make sure that we're comparing the right schools, because right now, something's off. Unless we're really a three out of ten for Forest, a four out of ten for Brookdale, if that's not true, you guys have to do a good job, because right now the PR police is calling us, and people will not look at us as a...
It's always one of those they look at. So GreatSchools.org, I believe, is the one that only looks at park sports.
Which is driven by park refusal.
So, so we have an inordinate effort in Verona to, to now allow some of them to take tests. They don't take the test, you count as, that goes with the averages you didn't take. And that drives down your score on GreatSchools.org. Washington Post last year ranked us, I think it was twenty-ninth in the state of New Jersey, and in the top one thousand, whatever it was.
That's right.
So we're either twenty-ninth in the state of New Jersey, or we're, you know, or one out of ten, because we don't take a lot of park tests. Now, Newsweek also had, when they were around, used to do a survey, NJ Monthly did surveys, and I can tell you that any one of these publications, including GreatSchools.org, including Zillow, vary year to year in what they weigh and what they count and how they count it.
I agree, but I'm just saying is that somebody here needs to be watching that, to make sure that things don't tick the wrong way, so we can call them up and say, what's going on? How do we make sure this is a valid presentation?
So we do that, we do that.
So three is valid?
Three is valid. It's a hundred percent. If, if the three, well, it's the last one, very clear. I don't wanna, I don't wanna play a word game here, right? Three is a hundred percent valid if the sole indicator of that score is how your students participated in and scored on the park test alone. It counts nothing other than that. Now, is the Washington Post full of beans? Because they write us twenty-ninth in the state?
No.
They're awful beans?
No, no.
No, so, so I'm either a one out of ten, or I'm twenty-ninth in the state of New Jersey. I'm fat and skinny at the same time. That's what it tells me.
I just wanted to agree to, but this is, this is listening out.
I've got another one that, that used to be, actually the one from, the one that dated, it was a Newsweek one. The Newsweek one, we spoke to...
Oh, New Jersey Monthly.
New Jersey Monthly one, and we spoke to them very recently about this, because they fundamentally, if you're gonna, if you're a district that tries to game those things, and we're not, if we, if we wanted to game it, it would be very easy for most of these. We'd simply tell, only the top three percent of high school students can take AP tests. And scores would jump to the roof, it would be highly concentrated, we'd get great scores, because some of the rankings, like the NJ Monthly one, only count the, the students who took the test and did well. Now, in Verona, we are a non-barrier district. We've eliminated barriers, because we encourage more students to participate and to try to achieve, and they take the test. There's no accountability. So some of the schools that score real high have pre-testing to determine whether they are allowed into a class in the first place. We don't do that. We want every kid to do that. So it depends on the, on the ranking, but I can tell you, GreatSchools.org, I don't have particular respect for, because they don't count anything other than park. And the, and it's punitive if you have students that don't take the test. And we have a fair amount.
And part of that as well is with the park refusal, so we have a fair amount of that, and we had several years ago, an even greater amount, a very high concentration of that here in Verona, and the data that they're using is actually two-year-old data. So it's driven by that, that information. So if someone is looking at that and using that as an indicator, we recognize that there is an importance for us to have an awareness that that exists out there, and we do, but we can't control whether or not parents are, we can educate parents as to what the state requirements are, that here are the assessments, that here's how we're going to implement it with fidelity, and what the impact will be to a child, but we can't force them to do it either. And then that does have implications on it. And that speaks to as well the spirit of, and this is prior to, if you've only been, recently moved into town about a year ago, we're actually coming out with our next publication of the Verona Public Schools Magazine, and that will be out this June. And that's being run again this year by our teachers, with myself, and with our students through capstone program here at Verona High School. And why that magazine and publication is important is because that really captures the spirit of the types of activities and the education that our students get that extends well beyond just test scores, which I could look at any publication, any magazine that's out there, and some of them have some value and some of them have less value, but they also do manipulate which metrics they're utilizing, for example, and how they weigh them. I could create my own ranking, and the board could create our own ranking, we can make Verona High School number one in the state if we want to every single year, but it really depends on what they're using. And then you also have to watch some of these publications that every other year, they're changing the metrics. So you start to see this jumping of school districts, and of course, that tends to sell real estate and gazebo's and doctors' offices, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so.
There's one other thing, too, in the end though, I'm with you a thousand percent. If somebody's gonna look for a great place to live, they're gonna go Google a great place to live, and the first hits you get are those sorts of outcomes. NJ.com, which is apparent around the spot ledger, just published the fifteen hottest real estate markets based on appreciation of property values in the state of New Jersey. We were number ten in the state. Verona was number ten, and with a north of ten percent appreciation in property values in whatever period they looked at, which was the last eight months.
And I think that's built off of the Zillow data.
Right, right.
So the turnover on real estate... So the turnover on real estate, what homes are selling for, and, um, you know, there are two drivers, right, of real estate. Geography, so where you're located next to business in New York City, especially in northern New Jersey, and schools. And we're very fortunate to have both of those, and a great town and community to live in, testament to the, the parents here, the teachers, the school system, the township, all of those factors, but just because you live in this area, there's certainly towns near us, some of them made that list and some of them did not, so there are a lot of factors that go into it, but things are trending in the way saying, you know what, Verona's a really great place to live, but, to your point, you know, those are things that we're aware of and we're mindful of, um, but there are different drivers to that.
And we did, we did speak to NJ Monthly, we spoke to Newsweek, uh, prior years, I think they had the funk down, we spoke to the Washington Post recently, um, we will reach out to the great schools, uh, folks, again, uh, they were determined that the only metric was park, okay? But they did that nationwide.
Yeah, Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
To add to that?
There's a good question. When we looked at it, they're using old data, and if they actually update, because we, we got, we dove this question, I think, Dr. D C, and we got this email from several parents about what you asked, because it's a good question. Um, when, when we dove into it, they, they're uneven, the great schools and how they look, they have some that's either three years, two years, or one year behind, so, I think when they update it, the scores will definitely move up. But to your point, we are working on a math initiative now, because we know we can get better with math, and we've worked with our reading and writing through workshop for probably more than five, six years now, so, we did see that, I think, I think we got that email maybe in January, that addressed that, so we instantly went to it, so when we see that, because we don't see that, we see that, we're like, well, wait a minute, that is not accurate, and I think our parents and our elementary schools would look at that and would not agree with that as well, but you're right, when it's out there, we have to make sure that we educate people about it. So good question.
Sarah Latson, nine Milton Terrace, I'm in the Lanning District. This is not a fun question to ask, but I want to ask it, uh, given what happened last week with the Paramus field trip, and the fact that, according to news reports today, uh, the bus driver has had his license suspended fourteen times, um, I'm wondering if the bus drivers we use have had their driving records evaluated, and if that's information that we as a public would be able to access? Thanks.
So, great question, um, our thoughts and prayers to those families in Paramus, um, and the difficulty that they're going through right now, and obviously, I think we were all very shocked, and, um, those sorts of events hit close to home for all of us as parents and educators. I can tell you definitively that, you know, the bus drivers that we have here are thoroughly vetted, we do background checks on all of our employees, we check especially with bus drivers, we have a very rigorous process that we follow, that's part of our requirements through the county, through the state, and then also for us to monitor their driving records, so, we are completely confident in the drivers that we have here, and that our children are safe with them on the buses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sarah Droupy, Tallahassee. I saw in the curriculum for the upcoming budget year, talking about a Japanese approach to mathematic curriculum, I, I didn't see any explanation on that. I teach math to fifth and sixth grade students, and we use Singapore Math, which is the Math and Focus curriculum that is incredibly rigorous, is that something similar, or can you give us just a little bit of insight in people, regular people terms?
I'm gonna call Mr. Miller on up, um, he'll explain that. We have had presentations, uh, we do them usually not on their budget, so it is a little out of context, we usually just mention the initiatives that we're working on or going to be implementing, that is something that we've been working on this year, Mr. Miller and supervisory team has provided an update as part of the rich math tasks and math lesson study, so he could speak a little bit to that for the public to give a little clarification.
Sure, so that's a great question, I, I'm a, I'm a math major, so I enjoy discussing this. Traditionally, how America teaches math is procedural, so we tend to model it and kids copy, and then when they try a math problem on their own, they bug their hand. So what we say in the reading workshop world and writing is they have no stamina. So for us to create stamina, one, kids should enjoy math, and they should try problems on their own first, so, what we're focusing on rich math tests, which work on the conceptual visual component, because kids, even we, we had a lot of lessons today on division, and children, like adults, you do not understand division, I could, you could try to explain it, but you, you can only learn it by procedure, so we use what's called a Japanese lesson study as our vehicle, so we have volunteer teachers, uh, in our three through five group and our K through two group, it's about seven or eight people, including me and Mr. Stevenson and our, our resident expert, uh, in this case, our expert's Bill Jackson, and what we do is we spend a day designing a lesson, looking at the standards, if we're looking at fifth grade, looking at fourth, fifth and sixth, it's exciting if you're a math person. Designing a lesson that has, it's, it's, well, the way we say, it's easy to get in, but it's hard to get out, so it's, in a way, it's like a, it's an inquiry-type approach, so, we pose kids with a question, and it looks easy, so then they come closer, and they start trying it, and they start wrestling with this idea of, wait a minute, like, what's really going on here, and they start talking, but the teacher's not saying anything. And what the teachers in the room do is that they, they don't look at the teacher, they look at the students talking, we record what students write down, uh, they do this in Japan, and they do it about ten times a year, and what they do is, when we're done, we reflect, in Japan, they reflect for two hours after lesson, we reflect for one, because we run out of time, but, we, we reflected twice today for an outreach, we ran out of time, so we have the person who taught the lesson speak about what their experience was, the team that designed it with the teacher, and then the people who are outside, what they noticed about the lesson, and the rich feedback is like, it's pretty amazing, and what it does is it teaches the teacher that they don't have to say much, that the students are the one that need to do the talking, and, we're doing this, uh, also with our science program in grades one through eight, we're trying to get the idea of like, we're not gonna tell you, because when we were in school, we were taught the idea of, well, here's the answer, and knowing math, I already figured out what my error could be, so I slightly mess up and say, I hit in my lab, and they'd be like, oh, great job, I didn't understand what the lab was. So now what we say is, like Ms. Thomas does, is she poses questions to kids, and through curiosity, they learn, and then, later on, they would learn like more facts, in this case, in math, we would teach them procedure after they learned the concept. And what park tests do, and SATs do, because they're all Common Core leading, is that they pose questions that are complex, that are different, and for students who don't learn that way, most of the time, they say, I'm not a good math person. Now, I will have to say this, everyone can be a good math person, and that, we're, we're reading a book now, and some of us have read it, it's by Dr. Joe Hall, or it's called Mathematical Mindsets, and the idea is that we can all be good, but we have to teach math differently, we, math is not if you're fast, math is good if you're a deep thinker, that's what real mathematicians do, that's what scientists do, they take their time, sometimes they work on a problem for years, and what, how we teach math is we teach speed is good, so we're trying to teach the teachers that, no more of those timed quizzes, that's why, how many of you want to raise your hand, why you didn't like math, my wife would raise her hand from home. Speed is not, speed is not really why kids are good, kids are good because they reason, they make mistakes, they come back, it's engineering, the design process, and ultimately, they get that aha moment. We had a couple of girls in fifth grade today with division, and I, we recorded this, they were like, that's why it works, and like, they were so excited, they must jump out of their chair, then who jumps out of their chairs in math?
You do.
Yeah, I do, and you do, but, these students were really like, they understood why, you know, we, we related it to like brownies and to divide up with your friends, but they totally understood why if you have three fifths of the brownies and you're gonna divide them by two, what that means, they also understood visually why you would take half or divide by two, which are the same thing. So, the Japanese lesson study, I, I can talk a long time, but, Japanese lesson study teaches our students, and teaches our teachers, teachers say much less, we teach procedures at the end, we don't teach procedures at the beginning.
So I know that you guys have been using the Confer Math workshops, I saw a lot in, in some of the boardments from, from last, from the previous year, that you're using that to support, and I know that's a lot of what they teach, is like how to teach conceptually and strategically, but what program are you guys, you guys...
We have envisioned, and what we're doing is, there's not really a math program that exists, there is a Singapore Math program that's coming out, that's called Dimensions Math, that actually uses the word do, and then, it says, it says try, do, and then, and, there's a good article, if you have the time, it's called Why Americans Think at Math, and, what we have to switch to is, it's, it's, and maybe the future comes at the end, but if you look at American math, it's teacher, teacher checks again, I'll give you a hundred homework problems, this technique, there really isn't any homework, the homework is drastically reduced, and I think every parent would be thankful for that.
So what's that gonna look like in a kindergarten classroom now? When you're talking about kids who are coming in very little, one to twenty...
Yeah, great question, like, we, we address those concepts, but like, instead of telling them, they kind of... And it is, like, it's, it's really manipulative driven, but then while we're elementary, absolutely. But our teachers have to learn how to do that, because they, they, they work really hard, but they learn, they teach how they were taught, you know, and I, I taught the same way, now I have so much guilt about what I did when I taught, it's incredible.
Mr. Miller, can I ask something?
Yeah.
Can I give you more about the approach and about the actual curriculum? I'm very familiar with Math and Focus, particularly fifth and sixth grade, and you can take like your learn in Math and Focus and open it up.
And then that's just be student-directed?
Yeah, typically a closed task, and you can open it to make it more rich task, which then allows for different strategies.
So part of what we said is our, our goal is to increase stamina, and when we visited Michelle's school, I mean, there were kids working on one problem for over a half hour, and people were like, no way, and, it's, it's really true, like, because they really get into it, and it's, if you can make it like we're looking at patterns and like puzzles, it's just, they're, you know, so we have, we're, we as adults are trying to make it more engaging for kids, okay?
Deeper understanding. It's kind of vague, yeah, when you just said Japanese lessons.
Yeah, so that's the approach they use in Japan, like, they, they...
It's directed, let the students kind of figure it out, teachers there to support as the end, and then the students come to their own, build confidence.
Oh, oh, absolutely.
And deeper conceptual understanding.
Right, yeah.
And I understand you experienced this too, also with Bill Jackson when you were a life officer.
And that aligns with the work that's been happening with Read and Ready Workshop, with the science program in math, just moving more towards that experiential learning inquiry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, we'll close, uh, tonight's meeting, uh, our next meeting will be on Tuesday the twelfth of June, uh, we have a confidential session at six P.M., followed by public session at seven. Good night.